Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Greckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Chaner?
Here.
Can we stand for silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the five
To the five The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started today, I want to read a press release that was released to the press earlier today regarding the COVID-19 in Suland outbreak. Considering the dramatic increases in the number of positive cases of COVID-19 in Woodbury County, Iowa, Dakota County, Nebraska, and Union County, South Dakota in this past week, we're calling on all public health organizations to increase the level of transparency in reporting the information to our community. We're asking the Suland District Health, Dakota County Health Department, the Iowa Department of Public Health, the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services, and the South Dakota Department of Health to provide more comprehensive reporting data to include the specific locations of where any outbreak or spread has occurred. Further, we're asking all businesses in our various communities to take responsibility for any outbreak or spread of COVID-19 in their facilities. This includes providing accurate information to employees and the public about any confirmed cases in their facilities and the steps they're taking to protect their employees. This information should be shared in a response plan to reduce the spread of the disease in their facilities and our community. If these steps cannot be taken, we'd ask the businesses to close at such time as the response plan is in place. Our priority is the health and safety of our citizens. To that end, we urge Governor Reynolds, Governor Ricketts, and Governor Noem to act cautiously in lifting current restrictions across this three-state region too soon. We would also urge citizens remember that even as things are lifted, we need to be diligent and continue to follow all guidelines to prevent the spread of COVID-19. We would like to commend our businesses and citizens who continue to do what they can to reduce the spread of COVID-19 in our community. We appreciate the sacrifices that have been made to protect our employees and residents. We would ask that all businesses and public organizations work together to keep our community better informed and we work together to fight this pandemic. This is signed by the mayor, myself, and John Winkle of Sargent Bluff, Rod Koch of South Sioux, Randy Fredrickson of North Sioux, and Jerry Akavich of Dakota City. Thank you. With that, we have an interview on the Transit System Advisory with Mike. And I'm not even going to tempt Mike's name. Mike, I'm sorry if you're on the phone.
Mike, are you on the line? Sorry, but can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
No. No.
Can you, Pete?
How about now, Pete? Mike, can you say something, please?
Yes. Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Well, I can hear you.
Yeah, it's pretty difficult to make anything out, Mike is saying.
Can you hear, Mike? Can you say something again?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better. You're breaking up.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mike. Tell us a little about why you'd like to be on the board.
Well, I have always been a believer in public transit. I've been a lifelong Sussidian, and I have been a regular passenger on the Sussity Transit System buses since I was five years old. And that's been a long time. And I've known many of the drivers. I've known a lot of passengers over these years. And I've enjoyed riding the buses. I believe in it. I take the bus today even by choice. I have a car, but I still believe that I think people should use the bus more as a public utility. And I would just like to serve. I've had a couple of people ask me sometime, oh, you like the buses so well, why don't you be on the board? And I thought, well, yeah, working as a school teacher here in town, you know, you get busy like everybody else. But I thought, well, I'll go for it if I can. I have no experience in public transportation or in business or anything like that. Language arts teacher, that's what I am. But I just have a big interest in the system. I always have that. And I'd like to serve if I could be of any help.
Questions for Mike?
I'm happy you applied. It's Dan. Thank you.
Thank you for applying, Mike, and we'll let you know, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, until further notice, there are no in-person public attendance at city council meetings. However, we have a telephone number, 712-224-4996. If you want to call in on a particular item, please feel free to do that. Today, our consent agenda consists of items 3 through 10C. You can consider these to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. Any person wishing to speak on the agenda item will call in and state your name and address for the record, and we'll limit your time to three minutes. Items 11 through 15 are the regular discussion portion of the agenda. Again, if you want to call in, please do so as I read those particular items. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is the reading of the city council minutes of April 20. Four is actions relating to transit grants. A is a resolution authorizing an application for the annual consolidated transit assistance funding from IDOT. B is a resolution authorizing applications with the FTA for federal transportation assistance. C is a resolution authorizing the application with the FTA for funding under the CARES Act. D is a resolution authorizing an application with the FAA for funding under the CARES Act. Five are actions and agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving change order number one to a service provider agreement with quality striping for the airfield water blasting project. B is a resolution approving a contract to Knife River for the 21 FY21 Correctionville Road Overlay Project. C is a resolution approving a contract to Mark Albinicious for the 2020 Phase 1 Utility Payment Repair Project. D is a resolution approving a contract to Mark Albinicious for the 2020 Phase 2 Utility Payment Repair Project. E is a resolution approving a rent deferral agreement with Hawthorne Global Aviation for deferment of the lease payments for 120 days at the airport. I guess I would really like to know if they didn't qualify for some PPP money because I got every reason to believe they do or they did, and why is this necessary if they qualified for that loan?
Mike Colette, Assistant City Manager, and I asked that question, and they told me they did not qualify for that loan that was asked.
That's just almost mind-boggling that they didn't qualify for that.
Yeah, that's the response I got back from them.
They did or they did not?
Or you would have.
They did not.
My problem is, we've done this before, and you're going to now have, I hate to state, I'm not even going to state who, but I know what's coming next. And we're going to have other people that rent from us. They're going to want the same thing, and how are we going to be able to tell them no?
It is possible, and I was considered in this. I see them more as in operations with us than just a tenant. So they provide a service.
You can make that case for Simmerina Harbor because they're going to be next. I can almost guarantee you. They already did it during the flood. They'll do it again.
To me, the FBO is an integral part of our operation there. So for fueling and our tenants, our other tenants have a vested interest in them being out there as well. That's the only reason it was brought forward.
Okay. Six are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution authorizing payment to LNL Builders for the Convention Center Cooling Tower Project. B is a resolution authorizing final payment to Evacwa Water Technologies for the asset renewal Phase 1 dewatering and odor control procurement project. C is a resolution accepting settlement in the case of the city versus Smith. Seven appointments to civil service commissions. Items seven and A and B are motions appointing Jay Dorschner and Michael McLennan to the Civil Service Commission. A is purchasing resolution, A is a resolution to purchase order purchase order Halit Materials for road gravel.
Mayor, we have someone from Halit Materials that'd like to speak. Sir, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Could you please give your name and address, please, and address the council?
Yes, my name is Chad Ripley. I'm with Halit Materials. Our address is 220 Westford Street, Wall Lake, Iowa.
Very good. And go ahead and give your testimony, please.
Yes, I just want to, with regards to the gravel bid with the city of Sioux City, I know there's a 2%. If it's within 2%, they could go either way. To buy local, I just want to express my opinion that here are just as local as anybody. Our pit's in Woodbury County. It's located at 2037 Mason Avenue in Anthan. That's where the material is going to be coming from. We have, one of our employees is actually from Woodbury County, and the pit is leased from a Woodbury County resident. They receive royalty based off of what we produce out of there, so they'll be seeing revenue as well. And there's self-tax that we're going to be contributing to Woodbury County out of that pit for the sale. And we're also working with the rights and Woodbury County to develop that pit and do a conservation in life once that pit is done. So that's kind of my points to specify that we're actually local as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Does the council have any questions?
Mr. Padmore?
Yes.
Can you or someone summarize what was said? I had a very difficult time catching every word and also who that was.
Yes, he's with Halit Materials.
I would agree with that.
They were the apparent low bid, but were within 2%. Everest was the next higher bid. Everest originally put on their bid form that they're from Sioux Falls, but then corrected it to show that they have a Sioux City or local preference. Halit Materials also has a local preference in that they have a quarry in Anthan, Iowa, and would like to receive credit for local preference as well.
Who was it that presented?
A member, representative from Halit Materials.
Chad Ripley.
His name is Chad Ripley.
Okay. So you're, Halit Materials is in Anthan, and LG Everest is in Sioux City, and he's saying they're in Woodbury County. That's local.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Alex. Go ahead.
No, you're fine. I was just going to ask, I thought he elaborated a little bit on their efforts or, you know, what they had here in Woodbury County. Is it just the quarry that's in Anthan or any of their other operations? It sounded like he elaborated a little more, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, he mentioned.
This is Pete. Bob, tell me if I'm wrong here, but that 2% city code, I think is specific in terms of the local selected bidder is defined as having been determined to be within the corporate limits of the city, physical and economic relationship to the city determined by payment of city property taxes. So what I don't know is does, I'm not even sure that the business was it Halit Materials?
Yes.
Yes. I'm not even, do they have an office in Sioux City? Do they fit the definition?
Nicole, are you on the line? Could you outline the local preference in Halit's in Anthan? Everest is identified as being in Sioux City as far as how local preference would work? They're both Woodbury County entities?
Sure. The first level is you look within the city limits, the ties to the city of Sioux City. And then outside of that, you can go to the regional area, which includes the five county area and then into different states.
Preference goes as local, as local as possible first, and then it goes out from there?
Correct, to the five county area.
Can I add another statement?
Yes, go ahead, please.
The material being produced, if it was bid out of the Crocker Pit, that's actually in Idah County. So the material that's being produced is actually being produced in Idah County. We're producing material in Woodbury County.
Mayor and council, Chad Ripley from Halit pointed out that while their quarry is in Anthan or in Woodbury County, LG Everest Quarry is actually in Idah County and is not a local, would not be within local preference for the county.
But LG Everest has their plant or has an operation down in the old stockyards, right?
Yeah, they have a storage yard in the stockyards.
Is there anyone else on the phone, Bob, to speak to this?
Nope, just the representative from Halit. The item as presented does, is a motion to approve Halit, so if you were to choose to go with Everest, you would need to make an amendment.
I guess, did we have an answer whether or not they meet that definition like Pete was asking? I mean, they don't have a physical presence in Sioux City proper, correct? I mean, I understand where their quarry is, whereas LG Everest actually has an office in Sioux City proper.
Sir, do you have an office, an actual physical presence in Sioux City?
No, we don't. Our office is in Wall Lake, Iowa.
No, they do not.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that they qualify then.
Yeah, but they're the low bid, Pete. So they don't.
Halit is, isn't it, aren't they?
Yeah, Halit is the low bid. That's what I said. They don't, technically, they don't have to meet the local preference because they're the low bid. I don't, I don't have a dog in this fight, but I don't know why when it's a commodity like gravel that we're going to worry about that, I mean, there is a lot of aggregate that's purchased through the concrete we buy from Ready Mix that Everest furnishes. It's not like they're being short-changed dramatically. So if you want to make a motion to award it to Everest, that's fine. I'm just going to vote no. You know, we got the same thing coming up, and I've got friends that sell for Suland trailer sales, but you know, if that bid would have been Sula, or the place in South Sioux, and they would have been second, and somebody from Des Moines bid it, I bet we'd want to give it to the South Sioux company just because they're in our area, but all of a sudden now we want to give it just to Sioux City people. I think I want to be careful doing that personally. But rest of you can decide.
Yeah. And I understand that argument. I guess, yeah, they don't need to be local because they are the lowest bid. It's a matter of whether or not we want to switch that due to local preference. That makes sense.
Yeah, I'm, well, I I actually think it is best to support businesses located in Sioux City and who have a physical presence and who pay property taxes to the city. Over the years, I would imagine, and I don't have the answer, but LG Everest probably has paid plenty of property taxes, and I have nothing against Halit Materials at all. I just, it just seems appropriate that we support Sioux City businesses where we can. I understood that was the purpose of the 2% municipal ordinance anyway. But if it's not, and we just want to go with the low dollar, then we, then we should say so.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm asking for a motion. That's all I'm asking.
Hey, Pete, this is Dan. Does it make any, does it make any difference to you, though, that what the mayor said earlier about it's not like we're not supporting the Sioux City businesses with past contracts and past business?
Well, how do we, if we, I think, to the best of my knowledge, Dan, all of the action items that have come up in council meetings that where the 2% entered into it, we've always awarded it locally. If we're not going to do that, then, I mean, then I think we probably should get rid of the ordinance, but
Well, it's a little
It was a little easier, though, Pete, on some of those because it was, you know, is it Keneffler Chevrolet or somebody in Des Moines? You know, or is it somebody in Sioux Falls, or is it somebody in, you know, Sargent Bluff or South Sioux City? I mean, it was a lot easier to decide that, is what I'm saying.
Well, I understand. But to Pete's point, you're saying the difference is property tax specific. They're paying into the city versus.
Make a motion, guys, to amend it so we can move on.
I'll make a motion to award, oh, yeah, and second, whoever you want to give it to in second.
Well, the motion would be, have to be, Peter, are you saying to award it to LG Everest, just so we're clear?
Yes.
Okay. And Alex seconded.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
No. Probably has as much to do with how many times I get stopped by those down trains as anything else.
Are you still there?
Probably not the way it should be.
Thank you, thank you for calling.
B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to CAP for the purchase of asphalt and crushed concrete. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to frame the liners for one side dump semi-trailer. The motion to amend this item by awarding the purchase order to Sulon Trailer, who is eligible for a local preference due to 2% less difference in the bid price. Does anybody want to make a motion to that effect?
Well, if we're going to be consistent with what we just did on 8A, I'll make that motion.
There are seconds.
I would second that.
Second.
Okay. Again?
No, Alex seconded. Dan made the motion.
To award Suland tractor, okay. Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
I vote aye, probably more so because I think the resale value might be higher, but D is a resolution.
Waters?
Oh, sorry.
Aye.
Thank you.
D is a resolution awarding a purchase order to RJ Design for a 14-foot conveyor baggage chute for the airport. Niner, applications for beer and liquor license. See the list. Come forward if you have questions. Tenner, receipt of minutes. See the list and come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard? Anybody phoned in? Call the roll.
Moore?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Eleven
Aye.
Recommendations of planning zone 11 is a resolution approving a final plat of Dogwood addition. Petitioner Al Fagan, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Twelve is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of IDOP for land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area and authorizing the sale of the property of 550 Lafayette Street. I'll move that. There are seconds?
Second, Dan.
The hearing is now open. If anybody would like to speak for or against it, please do so. Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Oh, Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Thirteen is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of MidAmerica Energy for the underground electric easement and combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area to the property of 550 Lafayette Street. I'll move to delete that item, please.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Fourteen is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the transit lighting project. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing is now open. If anybody would like to be heard. Mike, how soon are you going to get rid of this building? I hate to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on lights and be moving out in two years.
Yeah, so this is part of a grant as well. This is an 80/20 grant with DOT. So this was put in 18 months ago, the grant. And I get it. It'll be more marketable, and it'll be of a higher resale, which we'll get some benefit on the backend, too.
Okay. Anyone else be heard? Hearing is now closed.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Fifteen is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Lewis and Clark Park Ticket Office Building Replacement Project. I'll move it.
Second.
Hearing is now open. Anyone want to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Citizen concerns? We have none. Any council concerns?
Mayor, this is Dan. I have one I'd like to bring up. If I may, I'll try to be brief. It's just an update on the new Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center. There are some components that I just want to update the council and the mayor on. With regard to a 28E agreement, this will be an agreement between the city of Sioux City and Woodbury County. This agreement will encompass the extension of all needed utilities from Highway 75 East on 28th Street to the location of the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center at 3701 28th Street. This agreement is being processed through Brian Wells with DGR Engineering. Since this utility work is not work performed on the building site itself, it is not controlled by the LEC Authority. Next is our architect. The architect, Larry Goldberg, and his staff continue to work on layout and drawings in the various areas of the LEC facility. Last week, a team meeting was held via Microsoft Team online with a discussion of detailed needs in several areas of the main floor of the LEC. Further meetings of this type will be held as the planning and drafting process advances. When this part of the process is completed, and the COVID-19 situation allows, Larry Goldberg will be back in Sioux City with the actual drawings for another review with all entities that will be occupying the law enforcement center. Next to last is the lease agreement between Woodbury County and the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Authority. This lease agreement is between the two entities and will apply to the period of time during which the bonds to build the LEC are being paid off. This lease agreement must be finalized before the bonding process can begin. Lease agreement currently is in draft form, being reviewed by the authority's legal counsel. I did go through that lease and made several comments and sent those into the parties that needed to see the comments. And then lastly, there will be a similar lease agreement between the city of Sioux City and the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Authority. This lease agreement will also apply to the period of time during which the bonds to build the LEC are being paid off. This lease will be drafted following the completion of the lease agreement with Woodbury County. And I lied, I've got two more, two more subtopics. Bonding process, when those two lease agreements, one with the county, one with the city are in place, a bond rating will be applied for. Once that is established, the bonding process will begin. As of this date, bond interest is lower than was projected during the referendum process. This result, if it would hold, will mean lower than estimated taxes for Woodbury County taxpayers. And lastly, fiber optics, the fiber optics that will connect to this LEC facility to the rest of the world are a very important asset to the complex. The requirements and the most up-to-date materials are being reviewed and will be applied in construction of this complex. And I wanted to report that to the mayor and council as one of the three commissioners sitting on the authority board. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I, Dan, I missed, I didn't hear very well on the first item about the utilities from where to where and whose responsibility it is?
The utilities will be let me find that, Pete.
I think that was the first item you spoke to?
Oh, it's a 20, yeah, the 28E agreement between the city and the county. It'll be an extension of the utilities from Highway 75 East on 28th Street, going east on 28th Street to 3701 28th Street. And that 28 agreement, it's going to spell out who pays, that the county pays for what.
Twenty split.
The city does not go above and beyond or over what we have committed to, what the city has committed to.
All right.
Oh, is that amount, Mr. Padmore? Isn't it 2? Isn't it 2.8?
2.8 million dollars.
Less than 900,000, Pete, for the, for the street, or for the property, and that would go toward our street improvement expense. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Yes.
The 28E will govern between the city and the county, and it'll specify that we're not to exceed our 2.8 million dollar commitment.
And that 28E agreement has to be voted on by the council?
Yes, sir. And by the county board of supervisors.
Yes, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else? Can't tell you how much I miss you, guys. I'm over adjourned.
Second.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Pete, I love your 30-second delay.
Aye.
Chaner?
Chaner? Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters? Waters.
Be safe. Yes, everybody, healthy and safe. Bye-bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Now, here's what every man should get, is Mother's Day gifts from the Good Guys Auto Club. What can I get, what can I get her?
What is it called?
Good Guys, they have these big car shows all over the United States, like that one in Des Moines where they have like 5,000 cars.
Right.